As courtesy to everyone, please take a moment and silence your cell phones or other electronic devices that might interrupt the meeting. Thank you. Welcome to this meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster incorporating on February fifth eighteen nineteen. As an adjustment from what I've been saying for a while, Mr. Dayhoff and I have been diligently, and he has done most of the work trying to figure out the exact incorporation date. We feel very confident that is the actual date of incorporation regardless of what that says up there. We are gathered here at historic West City Hall, originally an estate built in eighteen forty-two by Colonel John K. Longwell. The city acquired this building in nineteen thirty-nine and has since been the venue where the mayor and common council conducts city business. One interesting fact about Westminster is that it's the birthplace of the first Maryland State Police barracks that was opened in nineteen twenty-two. Westminster became home of barracks G. It was established to help enforce prohibition laws and combat bootlegging, which was rampant in rural areas at the time. The barracks not only marked the beginning of modern state policing in Maryland, but also played a key role in shaping law enforcement across the state. Now moving on, the council typically convenes on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Please note that these meetings are open to the public here at City Hall and are also streamed live on the YouTube cities, the city's YouTube page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We extend our gratitude to the media center for their partnership in ensuring public access to these meetings. Now we'll begin, as we knew every meeting, with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
This is the United States of America, in truly public interest, and as one nation under God, and in this hall, this other thing that now says it's wrong.
Thank you very much. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available on the city's website. Hard copies of the agenda are available here in the front of the room for those in attendance. We have one presentation this evening with Courtney Davis, the clinical director of Care Healing Center, correct? So, Ms. Davis, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. A step back a little bit. Thank you so much for giving us a few minutes to just briefly describe the services of Care Healing Center and invite the council members to our second annual survivors vigil that's being held on October sixteenth. Care Healing Center formerly known as Rape Crisis and Intervention Services of Carroll County has been in this county since nineteen seventy-eight. So we are pushing fifty years of providing services to survivors of sexual violence in the county. Our services are for ages five and up, and our mission is to provide counseling, advocate resources and education to all survivors and their family members of sexual violence. Just to give some statistics, in fiscal year twenty-four, we served one hundred and seventy-three survivors. And in fiscal year twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-six survivors. And so far, our first quarter of fiscal year twenty-six, we've served forty-two new survivors. Amongst those survivors, we've provided one hundred and ninety-four helpline calls. We've provided ninety-six accompaniments for fiscal year twenty-five. Two hundred and nine crisis sessions, nine hundred and forty-three counseling sessions, and two hundred and thirty-two outreach presentations. All of our services are completely free. No one has to have insurance or provide any kind of financial support for themselves. We provide all of these services completely free. So we are dependent on grant funding from the federal, the state, from the county, and from private donations. We only have three counselors at this time. We've provided almost two hundred counseling sessions since July the first already. And as I said, we serve ages five and up. So sexual violence isn't just rape or sexual assault. It's also sexual abuse that happens in the home. It's cyber sexual bullying that happens with school age students. And we are now, we've been in the Carroll County Public School System for two years now, providing presentations as part of the health protection curriculum, ages sixth grade and up. And we're back again this year. We're very grateful that they've agreed to have us back again. We provide presentations that are developmentally appropriate on issues like consent, healthy relationships, intimate partner violence, and protecting yourself on the internet from predators. We also have recently started the Human Trafficking Task Force. We house the Regional Navigator Program for the county. And so we work closely with law enforcement, with Child Protective Services, and other partners in the county to help protect young people up to the age of twenty-four from both sexual predators, sexual trafficking, as well as labor trafficking, as our offices handle that as well. So we're really proud of the services that we provide, and we just worked out with Carroll County Public School System to start providing age-appropriate presentations to fifth graders. So we're going to start working on just body autonomy with them. The difference between secrets and surprises, safe touch, all of those things. Things that should be started much sooner, but fifth grade is what they're letting us do, and so we're happy to be there. So that's the presentation that I had for this evening. I just wanted to let everybody know that Care Healing Center is the same as Rape Crisis. We just greatly expanded our services. And we're working with the Calhoun Foundation hopefully to be able to expand our services and get a broader reach outside of the Westminster area, so we can hit like the southern area of Carroll County, which we really haven't had the opportunity to be in too much. So again, everyone has been given an invitation to our survivors vigil on October sixteenth. We would love for you all to be there. It's going to be just a lovely evening honoring the survivors. We're going to have luminaries, speakers, and it's just going to be a nice event. If anybody has any questions for me?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Dayhoff, go ahead.
May we have a copy of the statistics in your presentation?
I can email everyone a copy.
That's okay. Do you need Mr. President's version?
Yeah, happy to be here.
Thank you for your presentation. Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Davis, sorry?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is that, is that appropriate?
Of course it is.
You said you're a nonprofit. Do you have, maybe you don't off the top of your head, but do you have a handle on what your annual operating budget is?
I believe it's around five hundred and fifty thousand is our annual operating budget. Don't quote me on that exact number, but I believe it's right around that number.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Davis, thank you very much. I think I speak for everybody here. You guys perform an incredibly critical service here in the community. And I know we're all very grateful for it, and hearing what your budget is is pretty amazing. You're getting that done for half a million dollars with everything that you stated, so you should be very proud of that.
Thank you very much.
Very cool. Thank you. And you do not have to stay for the whole meeting, although you're welcome, you're welcome to leave if you like, but you can stay if you don't want to either.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much for your
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And have a nice evening.
Good evening.
Do a football game if you're going to watch it.
Take care of your wife. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to Mr. Lilly. It's you're the prologue, right?
That's right.
And is it Dr. or Ms.?
It's Dr.
Doctor, I apologize. I figured it probably was.
Everybody at the college just calls me Flav.
Okay, yeah. So we're always grateful to have a representative from McDaniel here, and this evening we've got Dr. Flav. And he's going to comment for us.
Thank you. Of course, I bring greetings from the college, particularly from our leaders there and the faculty, and even our students, some of who know that we come and have a good partnership with the city. We're really pleased to be a sponsor again this year of Fall Fest. I saw some of the rides and games already going up. We're looking forward to the events and the parade, and I was told today And I was told today that we expect a healthy contingent of McDaniel's students and staff and faculty to be marching in the parade this Thursday?
Thursday.
Is that when it is?
Yes, sir.
I'll just mention a few other things that I think are relevant to the Westminster community. We've been receiving quite a number of calls at the college about the track. Some of you may know that we're going through a renovation project where the track has been closed to the public. And it is a well-used public resource. Lots of people come and walk around the track. And I wanted to let all of you know and your constituents know that we expect the track to finish by the end of this week, and it will reopen to the public. So, that's a great thing. One community event that's popular in Westminster among kids is the annual Trick or Terror event that's held on the football field. We welcome families and their children to come out on the football field. That date is October twenty-third. And students, our organizations, our athletic teams will be set up on the field, and the kids can trick-or-treat on the field. Two last things also relevant, I think, because they, two events at the college that bring a lot of people from out of town, that businesses and the community might be interested in knowing about. The first is Homecoming Weekend is Friday, October twenty-fourth, and Saturday, October twenty-fifth. And then Parent Family Weekend, another large event, is on November fourteenth and fifteenth of this year. That's also Friday and Saturday. And lots of people staying nearby and hopefully walking downtown and are taking up restaurants and the businesses that are in the suburbs. Thank you for the partnership. We enjoy our relationship with the city and the opportunity to say a few words here now and then.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Flav forgot to mention one of the most important things, that he won the football game Saturday.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I helped the students who had never seen
Yes.
McDaniel win a game, or it worked.
We homesteaded in Juniata, right?
Yeah.
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 Good.
But yeah.
They got quite a thrashing.
It was, this is, it was an exciting event.
Yes, we, we're, football teams do, we expect them to do well. They're in a rebuilding phase. We have a hundred and thirty football players. We're one of the largest teams we've ever fielded.
Right, yeah. Well, we really appreciate you being here to that event. You put all my grandchildren. Love it. They go
Oh, good.
Thank you for that. And I like your purple shirt.
Well, it was for you.
Thank you. I'm good. Take care.
Oh, my God.
All right. Okay, we'll keep moving on. So, our first actual order of business is gonna be approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes this evening. The mayor and common council meeting minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the mayor and common council work session minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dayhoff, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gilbert, with the second, all those in favor, I'm sorry, are there any questions about the minutes or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. We have three items on the consent calendar this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gilbert, thank you very much. All those in favor of approval of the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The ayes have it. I'm sorry, are there any opposed? Hearing none, the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Now, we'll move on to reports from committees while keeping in mind Ravens kickoff is eight fifteen this evening. Arts Council.
Ah, you must be.
Oh. Keeping in mind the kickoff, eight fifteen.
Keeping sense alive, thinking right over you.
I promise Council President Travaccio, I keep my comments to a minimum. I'm going to read quickly. Friday, September twelfth, I attended the MML Board of Directors Retreat at the National League of Cities in Washington, DC. We reviewed the MML budget and investments, worked our way through leadership exercises, and had a briefing from the White House. In the afternoon, we were given a behind-the-scenes tour at the Capitol for the seat of Senator Dan Hollins' office. I'd like to thank Councilmember Ms. Gilbert for reading the proclamation at the seventieth anniversary celebration of the ARC. In case you're not familiar with ARC, this organization promotes and protects the human rights of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They also actively support their full inclusion and participation in the community. On Saturday, September twentieth, I attended, along with Councilmember Dayhoff, the unveiling and dedication of a patriot plaque at Historic Belgrade Square. This plaque commemorating America's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary and Carroll County and Westminster's own patriots of the Revolutionary War was sponsored by the William Winchester Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and it is on the edge of the park closest to Green Street, across from St. Paul's. And last, but certainly not least, trick-or-treating within the Westminster city limits will be held on Friday, October thirty-first, from six to eight p.m., and we ask that you turn on your porch light if you are participating. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I greatly apologize for skipping past you.
I'm glad.
The reason I skipped past you is because I did not have that for you, because you're the mayor. Okay, now we'll move on to council comments while keeping in mind Ravens. Arts Council, Mayor Becker.
Uh, no report. I'll save it for next time.
Thank you, ma'am. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Huff. Uh, no report tonight. Fantastic. Finance Committee, we have none. Mr. Peccarero is not here. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes. Um, the Veterans Day holiday was first recognized as a federal holiday in nineteen thirty-eight. Carroll County Government and seven other municipalities in Carroll County are closed in observance of the Veterans Day holiday. At the mayor and common council work session on September fifteenth, the Personnel Committee brought forth the idea of considering giving Veterans Day as a holiday to our employees as a result of the seating, as in the approval of the consent calendar. Tonight, as of tonight, Veterans Day is now approved as a holiday for the city of Westminster and is an additional day of free parking for downtown Westminster. That is all I have for personnel.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Gilbert. For public safety, you have one somber item. I'd like to take a moment and acknowledge a tragic incident in York County last week. There were three officers from the Northern York County Regional Police Department lost their lives, and two deputies of the York County Sheriff's Office were critically wounded in the line of duty. This heartbreaking news weighs heavily on the entire law enforcement community, and we extend our deepest condolences to the fallen officers, their families, their colleagues, and their community. Their courage, commitment, and sacrifice will forever be remembered and honored. We are grateful for the dedication to our officers, and this horrific event serves as a solemn reminder of the risks law enforcement professionals face each and every day in service to their communities. I'd like to thank Ms. Emmons for her assistance with putting this together for me. And it is very unfortunate. So, we'll now move on to Public Works. Mr. Peccarero is here. Mr. Huff, is there anything for Public Works?
No.
Okay, thank you. Recreation and Parks, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, yes, I have a few things. The Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay Foundation has confirmed October seventh as the planting date for the food forest at Wakefield Valley Park. As you may recall, reforestation was part of the Wakefield Valley Master Plan. This initiative, also known as agroforestry, will establish a self-sustaining ecosystem that, once mature, will bring free, fresh food for foragers and park visitors. It will feature native species such as common persimmon, American plum, Allegheny service berry, black chokeberry, hazelnut, pawpaw, and elderberries. Beyond its edible offerings, the food forest will support biodiversity, improve soil and water health, and offer a peaceful preening space for all to enjoy. Additionally, this initiative meets our B-City and Bird City goals. This project is made possible through funding from the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and marks another exciting milestone in the ongoing revitalization of Wakefield Valley Park. The second thing I want to bring to everybody's attention, if you don't already know, I'll remind everyone again that Fall Fest begins Thursday and runs through September twenty-eighth. Fall Fest is Carroll County's premier autumn celebration, bringing together families, friends, and festival lovers for four days, fun food, and community spirit. All proceeds from the event will benefit four local nonprofits: Rachel's Bears, Find Your Purpose, Crossroads Community Outreach, and the Westminster Municipal Band. That is all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilbert. I'm glad to see Rachel's Bears is one of those here that's gonna be part of that. That's, that's awesome, man, here. Um, we'll move on to Technology Committee. Mr. Dayhoff.
No report, sir.
Intergovernmental, Mr. Huff.
No report.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to council comments and discussion while keeping in mind the Ravens kickoff to date of fifteen. Mr. Peccarero is not here. We'll move on to Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to mention that this coming Friday on September the twenty-sixth, a World War II Missing in Action veteran, U.S. Army Private First Class Lawrence Beard of Carroll County will be returning home to Westminster. The Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency accounted for Private First Class Beard on June the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, and plans are underway to escort Mr. Beard this coming Friday afternoon. Mr. Beard was captured in the Philippine Islands and participated in the Bataan Death March. He survived that, but he did not survive the prison camp. So, we're happy to bring him home. That'll be my report. But I said, oh, thank you for mentioning the L O D D S.
It's important that we I know that was very important to you, Mr. Dayhoff.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert.
Um, I have a few brief things. On September eleventh, I, along with Councilman Dayhoff and Mayor Becker, attended the quarterly MML committee meeting at Bex in Seisville. And on the eighteenth, I presented the proclamation to ARC of Carroll County in recognition of their seventieth birthday. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Huff.
Go Ravens, Mr. President.
And I will echo, I will echo that for my comments. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to bids. We have ordinances of resolution. Is, we're gonna move on to unfinished business? I have no unfinished business of which I'm aware. Is there any unfinished business that I'm not aware of? Hearing none, we'll move on to no business. There is no new business this evening. Was there any new business that I'm not aware of? Fantastic. We'll move on to departmental reports. Who's in first?
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna start with the recreation report. We have given operations after the night off, since she has to work the entire weekend for Fall Fest. So, we are very excited to announce the main stage entertainment for Fall Fest. On Thursday night will be Dean Crawford and Dunn's River Band. The parade, the, the run starts at six fifty-five, and the parade starts shortly after that. On Friday evening, the entertainment is Doc Martin and the Flannels. And on Saturday evening, we have the very fine Amish Outlaws. One other, two other items for the Recreation and Parks Department. On September eighth, Wakefield Valley Park hosted a sunset hike that welcomed twelve enthusiastic participants. The group walked the main loop, taking time to observe the seasonal changes throughout the park. Along the way, they spotted rabbits, butterflies, deer, and a variety of birds. Naturalist Mika Lawrence joined the hike and started shared insights into the local ecosystem, including the medicinal uses of several native plants, many of which are commonly used for weeds.
Weed or weeds?
Weed, weed, weed. This is it.
Gotcha.
Elsewhere in the Recreation Parks Department, the window replacement project at the Westminster Fitness Center is progressing ahead of schedule. Thank you for all of those fitness center users who have been patient with us on that project. Additionally, the lighting upgrades at the city park pickleball courts were completed earlier today. Are there any questions for the Recreation and Parks Director that I can back to you on? No? Hearing none, we'll move on to the HR Department. Ms. Brown, do you have anything for us?
Thank you, Ms. Emmons. I have no report tonight.
Ms. Brown is not a Ravens fan, but did arrive in the red colors.
Absolutely.
She knows what she's doing. Are there any questions for this department? There are none.
Ms. Brown, what, what are you a fan of?
Uh-oh.
Sorry.
I too. You got no Bears.
Oh, they had a great game.
No Bears.
That was a good game last year.
Yes, they did.
They played very well. Sorry.
Do you mind kicking off this?
Isn't that, we won't hold the Bears against them. It was the Steelers, maybe.
All right. So, hearing that, we will move on to the IT Department.
I do not wish to report. I was gonna say, we are very excited and have our new member start tomorrow in the GS Department.
Oh, good.
So, very excited about that.
Fantastic.
Are there any questions for the IT Director? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Public Works Department. I just wanna take a moment to thank many, many staff who were out late into the night Friday night, overnight into the early mornings in order to address a water main break that we had on Main Street in order to make sure that the water was turned back on in time for most of the businesses to be open the next morning. There were a few businesses that were impacted the night before, those who stay up, open quite late. And but we managed to limit the disturbance for most of the businesses on Main Street. So, thank you to all those public works employees who coordinated that. All right, let's move on to the Planning Department, and we have with us tonight Ms. Garrett Harries.
Thank you. On, well, last Tuesday, September eighteenth, Planning and Zoning Commission held a hearing on Wakefield Valley Development Plan Amendment DP twenty-four oh one, parcel W, which is thirty-eight point two nine acres, and parcel X, which is sixteen point zero six acres. The amendment proposes to add thirty-five new density rates to parcel W to construct thirty-five single-family detached dwelling units, and then to dedicate parcel X to Carroll Lutheran Village for opens. The commission continued the public hearing to its October twenty-first meeting. And just for clarification purposes, the commission typically would meet on October sixteenth, but the commission has rescheduled the meeting for next month's October twenty-first. Also, the city is partnering again with Bartlett Tree Experts to host the thirtieth annual Community Forestry Workshop at McDaniel College on October fourteenth. That starts at eight a.m., and breakfast and lunch will be provided for all attendees. And that's all that I have.
Are there any questions for the Planning Department? Hearing none, we will move on to the Housing Department. Ms. Brown.
I have no report.
Questions for the Housing Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Good evening. I have no report this evening.
There we go. All right, we will just round out. I want to take an opportunity to echo Councilmember, I mean, President Cavaci's message and to give heartfelt, um, thank you to the Police Department, and, you know, our, our thoughts are with you all. All right, Major Bryce, can you give us your report?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Won't keep you long, I promise, sir. During the past two weeks, our primary focus was on community outreach, particularly with our downtown business establishments. These efforts were aimed at both strengthening our existing partnerships and reaffirming our commitment to open lines of communication between the Police Department and the community. We really had some meaningful conversations with some of our business owners. And we were able to discuss some of the current concerns and share information to reinforce our collaborative approach to addressing issues that affect both public safety and the success of their businesses. It provided us some valuable feedback, meeting with some of these businesses and being able to talk to them. It's gonna help us guide some of our patrol strategies and our visibility efforts. And obviously, continue towards a community policing initiative. And for the next couple of weeks, we plan on having more of these conversations with all our business owners. myself, Captain Jones, and some of our community outreach officers have been going down there and just kinda introducing ourselves, making sure that they know we're here and wanna keep those open lines of communication. So, it's been real good. So, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Bryce. I'm gonna speak for all of us. It's critically important. That relationship is vital to the success of downtown. They rely heavily on what you guys do. They can't survive without that relationship, you know, keeping, keeping public safety paramount in downtown. So, thank you for those efforts. Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got some great feedback from the business owners. So, thanks. That's really good. And you're gonna have coffee with cops sometimes? October first, that target. Okay. That, that's, that's, that's good stuff, also. Well, thank you. I got some great feedback from the business owners.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Anyone else? Ms. Emmons, back to you. Sorry.
Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
Thank you very much. That brings us to citizens' comments, finally, on our agenda. During which, we invite the public to address the mayor and council on issues related to tonight's agenda or any other matters. For those not in attending, not in attendance at this public meeting, we welcome your comments via email. at this public meeting, we welcome your comments via email at comments@westminsterndg.gov. All emails, email comments will be shared with the Mayor and Council. Please include your address, phone number with your comments, and now we will invite those present this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the Mayor and Council. Our role at this point is to listen to your comments and respond appropriately after consulting with staff and each other. Limby, is there anyone this evening that wishes to be here? No, right. On that note, our next meeting will be October twenty-fifth, and without objection.
October twenty.
No, I'm sorry. What did I say?
He said October twenty-fifth. It's before that.
Thirteen.
October thirteen. I think I screwed this up every single
End of the thirteen.
It's okay.
Yeah, I, I, I have got to get that. So, without objection, we are